Hi, my name is Tori.
And I'm Gina.
We are co-founders of Unite Oregon City, an active, nonpartisan volunteer group working to create an inclusive community where all voices are heard and respected. Our mission is to promote equity and acceptance within the community of Oregon City and surrounding areas, rejecting prejudice based on but not limited to ethnicity, cultural backgrounds, age, gender identity, sexuality, socioeconomic status, spiritual faiths, skin color, and country of origin.
Unite Oregon City hosted a candidate forum for the 2020 Oregon City Commission elections. We invited all four candidates for an interview. Three responded yes, while the fourth candidate did not respond. We had the honor of asking each candidate eight questions each, allowing three minutes to answer. We are excited to share their answers with you to help you become more informed of your choices when voting.
Please find Unite Oregon City on Facebook and Instagram to keep updated and informed. Please briefly introduce yourself. How long you have lived in Oregon City? What neighborhood you have lived in? What types of hobbies you have? And what makes you interested in doing this job?
Yes, everybody, I'm Denise McGriff, and I have lived in Oregon City since 1988. I moved here to take a job with the city of Oregon City. And I've lived in the Berkeley Hills neighborhood, and I've also lived in McLaughlin. My hobbies generally are, I love to read, I love to travel, and I've traveled most of the state of Oregon over the last 25 years, and enjoy seeing new places. And of course, as you very well know, I like visiting historic sites. I've been working on my old house since I moved in. And I also have been involved in the practice of yoga and working on nonviolent communication, which both of those practices go together. So I wouldn't say that's so much as a hobby, that's more of a lifestyle at this point. I'm interested in continuing to give back to Oregon City. It has been my home since 1988. And I think as a citizen, you have to ask yourself how you can invest yourself in your community and how your community can help you. So it's a two-way street. Many of you know that this is a volunteer job. I get asked all the time, "It's a volunteer job, really?" Yes, it is a volunteer job. The satisfaction that I get from working for my friends and neighbors and business owners, property owners in Oregon City is that as one person, I can affect change by working collaboratively with my fellow commissioners.
Well, I'm Frank O'Donnell. I am actually your current commissioner, going for a second term. I moved here in 1994 with my family and my young children. We built a house, we got engaged in the community. I ended up coaching in Oregon City youth sports. My children have gone through the school system, and I've watched Oregon City grow. And my house was actually part of that growth because it also used to be nothing but a berry field. So the reason I've lived in the same place since we built that house, my hobbies, I used to have time to fish and go outdoors more. And then I got engaged in the city first as an activist. And like most of you, you know, I don't follow what the city does till they either play with my wallet or attack my lifestyle or do something significant to me. So I got active in politics and determined that I could do the best job by having a vote. So I moved on to do that. And that's why I actually ended up doing this job because I thought I could be more effective by being one of those five votes and being a person of blue collar background who listens to the community. And hopefully that's worked out for both of us.
Hi, I'm Jeff Aiken. I live in the Tower Vista neighborhood. I've lived in Oregon City for about two and a half years, but my family has deep roots here. My wife's family's lived here for generations. Her grandparents used to live down on High Street. My uncle and my cousins grew up here, went to Oregon City High School, and have been members of the community forever. Myself, I'm a husband, father of a five-year-old daughter, I'm a drummer. And some of you might remember on Channel 12, I used to bring you some of the best professional wrestling in the Pacific Northwest. Had a lot of fun working in that industry and on television for a lot of years. I'm excited for the opportunity to serve as a city commissioner because in my time here, and what I know from my families living here, is that Oregon City is a super cool community. But we're facing some really difficult times right now. We don't know what the future holds with, between the pandemic, everything that we're facing as a society. And I really feel that somebody with my skill set can really serve this city in a way that can set it up for the future. Agility in responding to just the new news that we get very frequently right now, between our response to the pandemic, between elections that are happening throughout the world. We face a time where we need agile and swift leadership, and that's what I bring. I want to create an Oregon City that I and everyone else can continue to be proud to raise their children in.
What are your thoughts on how diversity, equity, and inclusion are currently being addressed by the city? Are there any actions or programs that you feel are missing or inadequate? And how would you implement them? And how would you determine their effectiveness?
To me, diversity, equity, and inclusion are really the foundation of everything about how people interact with each other, how they reach their potential, how they're able to best, or not communicate with, but contribute to this community. Without equity, people aren't given the opportunity to bring their full selves to the game. I want to use this as an opportunity to not just talk about how I feel about diversity, equity, and inclusion, but what I've done about it. There's one dimension of diversity that doesn't discriminate, and absolutely anybody can become a part of at any time, and that's disability. Anyone can have a disability, they can be born with one, they can get one through life. In my professional life, working for the Oregon Department of Human Services, I saw the need for people with disabilities to have an opportunity to bring their full selves to the employment place. And so I've spent a number of years building a pipeline that helps people with disabilities have a fair and equitable shake at getting a good job with competitive salary, with benefits, and with dignity, having a dignified job. But while I was doing that, I found that I didn't have all the tools that I needed to really be a strong ally and an advocate for people trying to get these things. And so on my own, I paid for a certificate through Cornell University in diversity and inclusion to learn the skills to be a stronger and better ally in all of that. And since then, I've been able to create that pipeline for employment, not only in my office, but I've been able to consult with other places and create that as well. I'm a strong believer in the Peter Parker principle of diversity, and that is that with great privilege comes great responsibility. And I take that really seriously. In the city here, I think we have tremendous opportunity, not only for people of color, for indigenous peoples and people with disabilities, but everyone to have a stronger voice at the table. When I look back over the years of people who have run for office in Oregon City, I'm honestly disappointed at how few of them are people of color, that they haven't felt empowered, they haven't felt strong and welcome enough to put themselves out there to serve our community. In my time as a city commissioner, I'm going to work hard to create those equitable opportunities, just as I have for people in the employment space, but for people in the city to be able to bring their full selves forward and serve and help this great community.
Well, it's very interesting. If you look at the Oregon City staff and your commission, both are quite diverse. And I've been very pleased with that. Your commission itself is a pure demonstration of diversity. I happen to be the old guy on it. But you know, we've got everything from minorities to young people to gay personnel. I mean, it's just a real reflection of life. And I'm very pleased that our hiring practices have yielded a nice mix of people. I'm very, I can tell you that when we hire, we look for the best person. And I can tell you, people like James Graham, what an incredible addition to the company. The fact that he happens to be a person of color is meaningless because when I looked at his resume, I just said, "Get this guy." And I didn't know what he was, and I didn't care what he was. But we have a nice diversity in the commission and staff. Denise McGriff on our commission, incredible. She could have interviewed behind a bamboo curtain with a voice modifier and no name on her resume, and I would have chosen her. That's how good her resume was, and she's shown that. We're doing extensive posting on job boards. The city is using websites to target candidates. But in the end, I will tell you this, we are looking for the best qualified candidate. And you know, could we do more in that pursuit? We talk about it because it is an ongoing process. The diversity, the equity, the inclusion training, I hope everyone's aware that we've done four hours for every member of the police department, and we've done 16 hours for each of our department heads. And that's not the end of the story. I mean, there's ongoing. So that will continue. I think that one piece that is going to be common through everything we talk about today, and especially this is the communication thread. And each of these questions will be intermixed with the other, and they will share solutions. I think there's more to be done. And sometimes for us, we don't know what we don't know. So come forward and be that voice because you cannot, as an elected official, you cannot make decisions in a vacuum. And that's why we have tried to form a welcoming commission.
The questions have a lot of eyes in them, and it really isn't about what I would do, but it is about what we would do as a community. I know that the city of Oregon City has already begun a process of looking at diversity, equity, and inclusion. And many of us know that this is a perfect time for us to be engaged in this discussion. With the death of George Floyd, it sort of brought everything to a head. I think it's been coming a very long time, but I believe that was the final catalyst that really engaged people and also forced some people to come to terms with what this was about. I believe that our personnel director is in the process of developing an outline for a policy, and I think that's where we have to start, is we need to have a policy, we need to make it a goal. And then we need to commit to a process, not only internally for the staff, but externally for the community. The police department, entire police department staff and the management staff has gone through a sort of a phase one of training. But there's so much more that we need to do. And the conversation is not going to be easy. It is going to be very difficult. It is going to make people very uncomfortable. It is going to make all of us uncomfortable. But I think the conversation needs to happen. I think once the city comes up with a policy, it will be up to all of us to develop the program that we want to see happen in Oregon City. We need to define how that process will work for us as community members. And it needs to be tailored specifically to issues, concerns, and opportunities that we have in Oregon City, as opposed to a one-size-fits-all.
What do you think are the most important strategies Oregon City can pursue to address homelessness and keep the city affordable to live in? And what will you do to move these strategies forward?
Homelessness is such a complex issue because there's no one cause and there's no one solution. And you're going to see things from people who are homeless and not of their own making to people who choose to live like that and decide that they will be homeless and that will be their lifestyle. And the challenge is to strike a balance between your rights, the rights of citizens here, and everyone's rights. And honestly, I'm an elected official, and I'll be honest, like it or not, my first commitment is to the people of this community who have made their homes here and chosen to raise their families here. Now, having said that, you know, we're trying, in many ways, this community leads other communities. We have a homeless liaison person in the police department. Unheard of, I don't think anybody else has that. We're adding mental health because the mental health component is such a big component of the homelessness situation. That's a crisis officer. We also are doing continued use of the county behavioral health people. And many of our operations, such as the library staff and the pool, the senior service center, they're going to interact with the homeless. And we've trained them in the very abilities that allow them to interact with homeless. So quite honestly, what we have to do, and it's such a demand on our resources, recognizing that we are the county seat, but we have to move towards a regional solution. And I would like to see other local communities engage with us, help us. The task is so huge that no one community can do it. So that solution needs to include health, housing, and income opportunities. If we can do that, we will be well on our way.
Thank you. I don't think that the two are mutually exclusive, but if I can, address them separately. With regard to homelessness or houselessness in Oregon City and in our region, I think it's got to be a collaborative process. Oregon City has lots of people who are committed to helping people who are homeless or houseless, but it is really spotty. We have one activity over here, we have another activity over here, we have people giving food here. I think the key issue is how can we bring that all together so that it is more of a one-stop shop for people, that they're not having to go to multiple locations to deal with this. The city of Oregon City received a grant, and they are hiring a mental health specialist in the police department, but that is one person. We have one police officer who's dedicated to dealing with the houseless, homeless issue. That's one person, that's two people. I think it's going to be more than just two people and the police department and the community. I think we need to talk about it as a region, and we need to come up with an action plan. We've been talking about this for years, and I don't really see any progress forward that has been made. And it's only getting worse. So I think a coordinated strategy is what we need. With regard to housing, we have a prime opportunity right now with the redevelopment of our comprehensive plan. And the committee that has been selected to do this, the lead, is very diverse and takes in people from all different walks of life. What I find that we need to do is we need to do a needs analysis to determine where housing can be put in the city instead of taking the approach of the state statutes, which basically mandates a one-size-fits-all. Again, I really think we need to tailor our housing to our community. We've got opportunities in areas of the city where density can be increased, and I think we need to provide some city resources to help people do that rather than just say, "Here's the zoning, now you just do it." I think we need to help people identify where those areas are and then provide a catalyst to make that happen and make it affordable. So a quick example is the Cove. We have an opportunity with a redevelopment project, now that we're not working with the prior developer, to really look at that as a mixed-income project. Now, that's not something that we've had a big discussion about at commission, but I think it's an idea I'd like to propose. Why does it have to only be market rate? People who are in the workforce category should have a lovely view of the rivers as well as anybody else who has money. So mixed income is something I think we definitely serious need to look at, and I'm hoping that's going to be an outcome of the comp plan.
I think homelessness is one of the biggest issues that Oregon City is facing right now. We have a number of people that live here that are homeless, they don't have a home. And unfortunately, for a number of reasons, we don't have all of the services necessary to provide for them. This is one of the most important things I want to address if elected as city commissioner. And what I plan on doing to do that is I've followed the model of other cities that have had some level of success in helping people that are homeless. Oregon City is very much on a path already to do this. Homelessness is not a situation that we can arrest our way out of. And our public safety officers, our police have responded to this in admirable fashion. I believe that there's more that we can do. And the cities that have had success in this have really put their money where their mouth is, so to say. They've made this a priority stated. And what they've also done is they've taken and appointed a task force or appointed a commission whose sole purpose, whose sole mission is to help people that are homeless. And that's what I intend to do. Seek funding possibly through the county or metro with the tax that was passed back in May to find a way to fund staffing for a task force so that we can actually address this in a concerted and organized manner. We have a number of groups that are doing great things to help people that are homeless, but they're not organized, they're not always working together and towards a common goal. And I believe that this commission could help point that out for them. I also believe, I was talking to a person at a park recently, it's at Hillendale Park, and talked to a person who's walking their dog through there. And they were talking about how their kids are going to have to leave Oregon City. They are nearing the end of high school and are going to, one of them is skipping the college route and is going to go to work, but they can't afford to live here on their own. And they don't want to live with mom anymore, right? I think we can all relate a little to that. But our housing prices are so high right now. And so I hope to be able to work with developers, to work with the city to prioritize and create affordable housing. I'm a strong proponent of House Bill 2001 that passed a few years ago in the state legislature, the missing middle legislation that allows for duplexes and triplexes in neighborhoods that really just enrich a community. There's more families, there's more children running around and having a good time. I grew up in a community just like that, and it was fantastic. But it allows people that can't afford just the skyrocketing prices of homes in our area to be able to live in a community, to be able to have neighbors that they're proud of, and to have a community that brings them dignity and allows them to, again, bring their whole self to our city.
In light of recent events and the inevitability of continued climate change crisis, what will you do to make our city more environmentally responsible and sustainable?
The city is taking what I would call baby steps towards this issue. One of the goals that I would like to see for the city for next year would be to come up with a plan and a proposal to develop a climate action plan. I've seen the one that the city of Milwaukee has, and it's really amazing. It has some very simple steps. It's not asking for the city to do everything all at once, but it's looking at it incrementally. They started by putting in electric charging stations. And I've noticed, if you haven't, around Oregon City, a lot more people have electric cars, which is great. So where in Oregon City can you plug them in? And I think a spot on the city parking lots would be great. I think we also need to look at how we are dealing with our food waste, our recycling waste. And I'm on a committee right now representing Oregon City, not the city commission, representing Oregon City on what will happen to the Metro South transfer station. And we're at the very, very beginning of that process. We've only had three meetings, but they're looking at a state-of-the-art facility. But I think the real key is how can we use less? How can we look at not taking so many things to the transfer station or to the landfill? Oregon City Garbage Company is going to be doing a pilot project with our commercial property owners and restaurants to do food waste recycling. I can't wait till it gets to homeowners. I already compost, and I put that back into my garden, such that it is. Didn't do too well this year, I'll have to say. But I think that's something that, there's a piece of that climate action plan that everybody can do. So tiny steps, but I think getting it in the goals is going to be key.
While recognizing that some functions, that would be things like heavy equipment, police patrol cars, pursuit vehicles, they don't really lend themselves to energy-saving technologies like hybrid and electric technologies. But by the same token, we actually have moved towards, and those are staff vehicles that don't have those demanding requirements. We have moved toward hybrid vehicles, and you will see them in service to the city. So they're increasingly hybrid. When you see new construction of public buildings, and specifically when you see like the police station or the Public Works Building, we're actually integrating the most current energy-efficient technologies we can. An example of that, and this is the Energy Trust of Oregon has given us a grant that involves solar energy, and we're integrating that into our public safety building. The other things we do, and they're of a green mentality, we try to repurpose things. And we repurpose everything from previously used construction materials to trees that have been taken down in the course of our operations. So we're trying, we're a small contributor, but recognizing that we all live in the same atmosphere, we're trying to make our contribution.
Climate change is a very, very real thing. I know it's not common in a situation like this, but I kind of want to tell a joke to help, and that is that, you know, I'm really thankful that climate change isn't real. I mean, that's what so many people have told us. With the recent wildfires and everything, I mean, if climate change was actually real, we should be horrified right now. But since it's not real, we can just brush it off and just have, write this off as an interesting experience we all had. But it is real, and it's a thing we're going to face time and time again here in Oregon City. Right here, we had people that live safely here evacuated from their homes. We had people that have moved to Oregon because of our incredible air quality not be able to breathe. As a city commissioner, what I want to do is work hard to prioritize initiatives that reduce our emissions, expand our opportunities for mass transit, expand our opportunities for people to be able to walk around or ride a bike if they choose to through our city instead of getting in their car. I want to look at developments and make sure and hold developers accountable to using sustainable energy, using materials that are recyclable, and then they actually recycle them. I want to revisit opportunities like single-use plastics and what we're doing with those as a city. It seems as a pandemic has taken the front stage, we're seeing plastic bags again, we're seeing those single-use straws in restaurants. That's a real opportunity for us to positively impact our community. I want to explore opportunities similar to what Portland has in leveraging solar power in our city. We have a lot of land that's usable, and Oregon, shockingly, is a wonderful candidate for capitalizing on solar energy, which is very clean. We have a lot of opportunities as a city to help curb the climate change that is coming upon us much more quickly than any of us can imagine. And it's going to take leadership and innovation at the city commission and throughout our entire city to be able to adapt to this. And those are things that I find extremely important and that I'm going to champion when elected as city commissioner.
Considering the transportation options currently available in our city, what are your goals for addressing traffic and making it easier to get around the city on foot, bike, or by public transportation? Do we have enough options, and if not, what will you do to increase them?
My family lives in a relatively new development in Tower Vista. It's beautiful. We've got sidewalks through most of it, areas that kids can play, and you can walk to your friend's house. But if you walk just one or two streets past where our development is, there are no sidewalks, there's no paint on the streets. It's really precarious as people walk their kids around or their dogs. It's not easy to get around Oregon City unless you've got a car. And that's just not, it's not going to help anybody, right? A lot of people don't have them, they're not going to help our environment in any way. What I would like to see is our initiatives that build sidewalks in areas. I want to see an increase in mass transit opportunities in our city, maybe like a commuter shuttle that picks people up and takes them off to bus stops that TriMet operates. What I know, having tried to ride my bike around the city, I don't know if you've ever tried, starting at the bottom of the hill and then trying to ride your bike up there? I like to think I'm in pretty good shape, but I tell you what, man, that is a, that is a really, really tough bike ride. is a really, really tough bike ride. But we need other options to get people up there. Could you imagine hopping onto a bus or a commuter shuttle down at the bottom of the hill, slapping your bike on the top, coming up, and then being able to ride somewhere else? These are very achievable in our city. And I think that with these, we'll be able to help our environment, we'll be able to help people move around. If you don't have a home and you want a job, you want to get there, you're not going to be able to drive across town. We need options for you. For people that don't work in our community, unfortunately, many people have jobs outside of Oregon City but live here, because we're a wonderful place to live. I'd like to explore and re-explore options of having the MAX run down into our community, utilizing the mass transit options that plug us into the greater metro area. Any opportunity that we have as a city to get people out of a car, and that we as individuals have to leverage not being in a car and using our legs or a bicycle or some way to help keep us fit and keep the environment clean, these are all incredible opportunities that we need to capitalize on.
You know, this is one of those questions that's linked into other questions, and I specifically consider this linked into the availability of housing and the availability of job opportunities in our city. If you look at the studies, those people who live in Oregon City and commute are commuting an average of 30 minutes each way, and that puts one more car on the road every day. And I recognize alternative mobility type studies and what they mean, but for purposes of this question, I'm going to divide it into four components. And those four components are essentially walking, driving, biking, and public transportation. I would break it down into that. In the way of what we've done in the way of walking, it's all about access. There's specific projects like the Kanema Trail that we've done. And even in that, that very little project, we had to strike a balance between public and private, you know, recognizing private property providing for the public. But we're doing things that make walking safer, illuminated crosswalk beacons on both Holcomb and Malala, and safe routes with reduced speed limits, speed control devices. Biking and, biking, you know, I think there's a lot of recreational biking. I'm not sure, I'm never convinced that 40% of the people bike to work because I just don't know how achievable that is in Oregon where it rains eight months out of the year. But that being said, for biking, we have provided bike lanes on the streets and arterials and collectors. Driving is all about more and better access. And what you see in driving is things like the Myers Road Projects, access to the high school, to the community project, community college. You'll see the Malala Avenue Project, which I, you know, every time I drive there today, I go, oh my God, permanent improvement, temporary inconvenience, and traffic control devices. And in a way of public transportation, I don't know if you watched last meeting, but we recently joined the Last Mile Share, which is funded by the state, and that's in partners with TriMet. So it's the best of both worlds. It'll serve those areas that TriMet cannot economically service. So that's how I would break that down. Thank you.
We don't have enough options in Oregon City. I know that the bus, TriMet's doing its best, but it's kind of a chicken and egg. They won't increase frequency if there isn't the ridership, and you can't increase the ridership unless there's the frequency. So how do we bridge that gap? There is a proposal to start next year for something called the Clackamas County Shuttle. I don't think that's going to be the final name, but it would be a shuttle in and around Oregon City that would be operated by a private party similar to the CAT that Candy has that comes into Oregon City to the transit station, also goes to the college and a few other stops. It would be something similar to that but would route around Oregon City. And we just had a presentation on that last week, I believe, yes, last week. Weeks are going by fast, last week about the possible route and how that would work. And TriMet is participating in this process. But I think really, let's think long term. How can we continue to do street projects where we add bike lanes, where we add sidewalks, where we add curb cuts to make it accessible for everybody? We have a disadvantage of being a community that's got three plateaus. That is not walkable for everybody, nor is it bikeable for everybody. So how can we make it better? I would love to see, dearly love to see us look at some planning with the region to try to get MAX to Oregon City. It was coming at one time, and when I worked for Oregon City in the late 80s and 90s, it was called South-North, and it showed a terminus in Oregon City. Through a long process of budget cuts and federal, lack of federal funding, it was cut back to Milwaukee. But can you imagine if it came to Oregon City? It would be so fantastic and take a lot of traffic off the highway, off our city streets. The other thing we have that's a little bit of a disadvantage is we have a lot of people that work in Oregon City that leave Oregon City. And then we have the same number of people that work in Oregon City who come into Oregon City. So we've got this traffic that is coming in and out, and because we're the county seat, it really makes a lot of difference because we have people who are coming in and out, but there's no way to have them help us share in the cost of the infrastructure. And so we have to figure out a better funding mechanism to make that work for Oregon City and keep our roads up. But you notice that the city is not making lanes wider or adding lanes, they're actually shrinking lanes. That is causing a little more congestion, and my traffic engineer colleagues basically say we have to get comfortable with congestion. We'll have to think about that and talk to the community about how they feel about that.
In an increasingly polarized political environment, how do you plan to involve residents in your decision-making process?
You know, much of this polarization is driven at the national level, and that's sad. That's a function of leadership. That being said, I hope what you have seen is a welcoming commission, and we are insistent upon that. So a welcoming commission is a first step. We've even made changes. They didn't used to accept public input at our work sessions, and we now do that, much to the dismay of our mayor. But too bad, because as I said before, I don't want to operate in a vacuum. The work sessions are public and interactive. We're doing more use of technology. It's more challenging now with COVID, and I think there's a lot to be said for in-person, but safety is important, too. We're using social media, we're using Zoom meetings, we're conducting surveys, we're engaging the public in the comprehensive plan updates. So you talk about Oregon City 2040, that's the engagement of the public and all user groups. But in honesty, I feel we can do better, and I've not been satisfied. And I know this is a point of pain between me as a commissioner and Oregon City. I feel we could do better in our communications to the public. When I look at how we communicate and I look at what our Facebook has, 2,500 people that view it, and I look at social media, and they've got 25,000, 30,000. You know, I've had, it disturbs me because I think it's underutilized, and I want to know how we can do better in that. And that will continue to be a point of pain until it's solved, and I'll keep pushing it because you've seen the power of social media, and I've seen it, and I see the need for technology. But I think we can do better, and I want to do better. And I'm open to suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. I spend a lot of time talking to people, no matter where I am. An example, yesterday I was at one of the museums that I volunteer at, and one of our neighbors was loading wood, and I asked if I could help him. And we got to talking, and he mentioned that he knew someone I knew, and then he says, oh, he says, you're running for city commission, aren't you? And I said, yes. And he says, well, do you have a minute? So we had 25 minutes of discussion about, he's a surveyor, he's an engineer, so we got to talking about transportation. So those are the opportunities that I like to take when I can. Former Transportation Advisory Committee member Bob Mahoney and I used to make light of the fact that I would spend a lot of time talking to people in aisle 13 at Fred Meyer. So if you hear me say that, it's a euphemism for talking to people when I'm grocery shopping or I'm at Michael's. So I want to take whatever opportunity, and I hope people feel that I'm approachable and they can come up and talk to me. One of the things that I am very aware of in this political climate, that as a woman and a person of color, I've become a little bit of a target. And this is new to Oregon City. While I have been here for a while, people are just, some of them are just getting used to the idea that there are people who are different from them, who are interested in our city for the same reasons they are. We're really not any different. We're really the same. We both have the ingot of helping to make this city better and making it more livable. So living with that every day, I just look at the idea of treating everybody with respect, making sure that people feel they're being heard. And I don't have all the answers, but I may know somebody who does, and I want to refer them to that and let them know that we will do our very best to try to solve whatever problem that they have, or maybe it's an opportunity. There's not always problems people talk to me about. They do talk to me about the good stuff, how they appreciate that city is doing improvements here in their neighborhood, or the pedestrian-activated signals are going to be placed on Malala Avenue. So you take the good with the bad.
I think listening to citizens is the most important job that a city commissioner has. It's my belief that we don't elect someone to sit on the city commission to just do what they think is the right thing to do. It's their job to advocate for the citizens of our community to listen. But I think that one of the challenges we face in our city is we have a group of very, very engaged citizens. They're part of their neighborhood association, or the citizen involvement committee, or incredible ally groups like Unite Oregon City, where they have an opportunity to share their opinion, to have their voices heard. But for the other 25,000-plus residents in our city that aren't involved at that level, those are the people I want to talk to. The city of Oregon City has done an incredible job of building up its social media presence. I'm really impressed with the work they did, and we saw some really incredible responses during the wildfires. But if you're an average citizen and you're on Instagram and you see a post from City of Oregon City, you're going to take it with a grain of salt. It's one of those official accounts. But when you see a post from Jeff Aiken or any individual person, you take that a little bit differently. Unfortunately, our sitting commissioners believe that what the city is doing is enough. That's doing social media. I don't believe that. We have to meet people where they're at. And because many of us are stuck working at home or doing school at home, we're at home. We're on social media now more than ever, and that's where we have to go and meet people. I was at a park the other day visiting with somebody who told me they didn't even know what a city commissioner did. And talking to other people around our community, that's actually a question I've gotten more often than any other question. Oh, you're running for city commissioner? What is a city commissioner? Those are the people we need to reach out to, and that's the thing I'm going to actively do. I'm going to hold virtual coffee with the commissioner sessions. I'm going to go onto social media and make myself available to people. I'm not just going to talk into the echo chamber that we've been talking into for decades in Oregon City. I'm going to try and talk to everybody, make myself available to them. It's not a one-way street. It's not them come to me. It's me reaching out, making myself available, hearing them, and then taking those concerns and their beliefs forward to the city commission.
Envisioning Oregon City in your four-year term as commissioner, what would you like to see in the way of change, and what would you like to see preserved?
Well, I think one thing is really critical to more citizen involvement is that we have to really take the politics out of appointments. And I know many people have applied for some positions for different boards and commissions that we have, and they're puzzled as to why they weren't selected when they know that they're very qualified. So I would like that to not be political at all. I think we need to find the best people for the jobs that are out there, the volunteer jobs. And if somebody has a difference of opinion, that's more the merrier. It's all about trying to come together and being collaborative. And division is not what we're after. We're after collaboration, we're after opportunity. The other thing I would like to see is how the city can leverage its resources to deal with the topics that we've already talked about: homelessness, transportation, employment. We have land that's available, but we need to leverage our resources to provide for family wage jobs here in Oregon City so people can live closer to where they work. I know that when I worked in Oregon City, it was really great to be able to walk across the street and go shopping at Danielson's Swiftway if I needed to run a little errand during my lunch hour. It was a lot different when I moved to my job in Portland. I just did all my shopping on my way home, always right in turns, so I was on the going home side of the road. But we have an opportunity with our base of residents who are highly educated and highly skilled to get them jobs that are here. So how we can leverage those resources is going to be key for the commission in the next biennium.
That was actually the first thing I got involved in because we are evolving from a mill town. I mean, I first saw this town in the 70s, and it was a dirty, tough little mill town. And we're evolving into what I hope is a destination town. And what I really always cared about as a family man is the quality of life for my children and myself and my neighbors. And much of this is going to involve working with partners. And those partners, like or not like, some of them, the state of Oregon, Metro, the county, and quite honestly, our newest partner, the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron, that is so powerful for what we're about to do. So we need to continue to evolve from a mill town to a destination. We need to provide living wages, and that goes back to that transportation piece. I would love to walk to work. I think anybody would love to walk to work. I'd like to have real living wage jobs and attract clean industries. I don't want to become a bedroom community, because when you're a bedroom community, all you are is a commuter community, and you load your streets, and you have those long commuter times, and you come home to your residents. I want us to be the complete offering. You know, I want to increase the amenities here. If you were to look at the surveys that we've done, people say that we need more amenities in the way of shopping and dining and beautiful parks like this one we're sitting at. And honestly, it's something I've thought about, and it comes up, and then it disappears, and it comes up. You know, we've got a senior center. Why don't we have a youth center? And that may be a joint venture, you know, that may be a public-private venture. But in an environment where it rains as much as it does, every one of us as parents know that the secret to keeping our kids out of trouble is keeping them busy. And I would love to see a youth center of some type, and that diminishes our traffic volume, gives our kids something to do, and in the end, it comes down to one of the commission goals, which is livability in this community. Thank you.
In terms of government, four years is the blink of an eye. And I think historically, governments in general have leaned on the fact that any initiative is going to take five, 10, 15, 20 years to be in reality. There are situations here in Oregon City, the Waterboard Park, for example, one that has been a topic of conversation for two decades. So with four years, what do I see? If elected to city commission, that kind of timeframe isn't going to be, it's not going to be acceptable anymore. We're going to have to get things done. What I know, what we all know, is that as we respond to COVID-19, as we have changed the entire paradigm of like how people live, how we shop, how we eat, how we do everything, we have to be more responsive to business. We have to be able to create regulations and rules that allow people to innovate and try. So Oregon City in 2021 compared to 2025 at the end of that four-year term, what I want to see is I want to see a rich and vibrant business community that's able to adapt to an ever-changing landscape. I want to see people wanting to come to Oregon City because of our incredible parks, because of our history, because of the tourism that we're able to offer. In a world where we have to do things outside most of the time now, Oregon City has so much to offer, and people Oregon City has so much to offer and people need to know about that. The four years that I will spend on the city commission will be four years that Oregon City realizes its potential as a place that people can still safely interact with each other, enjoy communities, and enjoy our history in a way that keeps them safe, keeps their neighbors safe and everyone else, but doesn't force us to live in isolation. It doesn't force us to not participate in society anymore. We have a real opportunity to emerge as leaders in Oregon as a place that, as a destination and a place that people want to go. Four years isn't a lot of time. But I think that if we as a commission can have a shared vision, focus on that, we can accomplish a lot of things.
Our last question we would like to ask, what else do you feel people should know that would help convince them to elect you?
You know, historically, people have run for public office because they believe in a platform. I'm pro this, I'm anti that, right? But I think that our world is changing. And if you're like me, you don't necessarily think our current system and the current for and against works all the time. It has brought us to where we are. And where we are right now, frankly, is kind of scary. We're facing social unrest at levels we've never experienced before in our lifetimes. We're facing a pandemic that as a country, as a state, as a city, we can't respond to in a unified manner. What I bring to the table that the other commissioners don't bring is experience. I have the skills necessary to collaboratively bring a team together, even if they have opposing viewpoints. In my time working in professional wrestling, in the entertainment industry, I was able to bring people that felt very strongly in different ways through contract negotiations and other very challenging pieces and bring them together to have a good shared outcome. I'm a private business owner and I'm an executive manager in the public sector. I bring both public and private eyes to everything that we do as a city. I understand the bureaucracy that is necessary to get things done. Unlike some commissioners, I understand that it's important to allow a city manager to do their job and manage their staff. It's not the city commissioner's job to do that. But the skill I bring is the ability to empower that city manager, to give them expectations and the resources necessary to accomplish the goals that we're asking of them. I'm able to understand the needs that business have. I've been on the other side as a business owner, wondering why a municipality has put a certain regulation into place. And beyond that, I understand the jargon and the processes of government, what it takes to make a change. I have written and championed statewide legislation that has improved the quality of lives for people living in long-term care. I was recognized and an article was written on the work that I did by Governing Magazine for the streamlining that I've been able to accomplish in government services. I've been able to save government, public budgets, millions of dollars by streamlining operations. It's with this mindset that I'm going to lead on the city commission. I believe that city government is meant to serve its people. And I have decades of experience, not only helping them serve, but also being served. And that's what I'm going to bring to the city commission that other candidates simply aren't able to.
Well, I hope you know what I've done in the last four years. And I hope you know the times I've come to the defense of our community. I hope you know that I've been a 26-year resident of this Oregon City. And I guess if you read the voter's pamphlet, you'll see a combination of education and experience that's necessary for future decisions. And my education was in pre-law and business. I also have an engineering degree, a civil engineering, which comes in handy when you're about to get overwhelmed by a bunch of technical language. And I don't want anybody to snow me. You watch this commission and you see us ask questions. I actually held a real estate license back when. So when we get involved in these real estate transactions, it's helpful to me. I'm not a real estate person now and haven't been for many years, but I've not forgotten what I learned. The situations you will deal with as a commissioner require a diverse background and a lot of knowledge. And that's what I bring. I guess more importantly, I bring a love of the community. And know that I've got no dog in the hunt, as they say. All I want is a good, livable quality of life for all our people, safety first, and just an enjoyable lifestyle. And I put all that on my Frank for OC election website. And I even write a little bird about who I am. So I'm not going to read it in this thing. But I'm just a blue collar guy that was fortunate enough that parents have pushed him towards an education. And I've been fortunate enough to be able to give back to this community as they have given to me. So thank you.
Well, I would want people to know that I really care about this town. I really care about the residents in this town. And I don't know everybody. But if I have an opportunity to wave to somebody, even if I don't know them, I'll wave because sometimes a smile is what that person might need for the day. I want people to know that myself and the other commissioners, we're here as your advocates. We want to know what you think. We want to know what we can do to further ideas that you have, programs that you think we should do. We're not here to be any sort of impediment. We're the advocates for the residents. We have a great staff and they provide a perspective. But the perspective that we're really interested in, or at least I'm interested in, is your perspective. I want to know what you want to see. What do you want Oregon City to be in 10 years, five years, one year? We have something here that's so unique that it's treasured for me. We are a people who respect our town. We need to also respect our citizens. We need to respect the diversity of opinions. It's a hometown feel. It's about livability. We all care about where we live. And I urge people to get involved, not just when it's something that's adverse that's happening to you, but get involved for something that could benefit your neighborhood or benefit the city as a whole. That's where we all come together. And collectively, we're going to make Oregon City even better than it is today. And I think that's really, really important. And I think that whoever is going to be elected in this position, I hope that I work hard. I plan to, I still work hard for you. I plan to work hard for you and I will continue to work hard for you and I will continue to advocate on your behalf.